Hey, good evening, folks. It's the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. I say that just to remind myself. It is Tuesday, the 18th of July at six o'clock. Welcome and thank you very much for coming. Item 161, does anybody have any declarations of any discloseable discloseable pecuniary interests? No? If I don't make any sense or less sense than usual tonight, I've been at County Hall all day and my brain's a bit fried. So you'll have to proceed. 162, apologies for absence, Karen.
Apologies for being received by Councilors and David Blackbones and Scully Terry.
Thank you very much. I think everybody else is here, which is great. 163, minutes to confirm the minutes of the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting held on the 20th of June. They were received by full council at the end of June. Are members happy that they are a true and accurate record? Yes, lovely, thank you very much. Shall I sign them? 164, approval of payments to receive and approve the attached listings of payments since the last committee meeting. They were circulated and there were some codes. If you were really keen, you can work out exactly who we've been paying money to. But anything to add on the list of payments, Karen?
This is complete. We just go from one period to the next period. I don't go through and censor it. There's a transparency code issue, which is where we would take certain things, our payments to staff members, which goes into the the transparency code section of the website. But this is from that date to that date, no exclusions in terms of payments.
Are you all content to approve the payments? Yeah. And I think I probably needed a proposal and a second.
It's for committees, so we resolve this.
Yeah, Chris is proposing and Maggie's seconding. Thank you very much. 165, financial report for the three months ended the 30th of June. Again, this was circulated and there's a bit of narrative at the front of that. Alan, do you want to talk us through the key points in that report?
I think in terms of where we are in the first quarter, we've actually done better than we get properly forecast. Our income variance is about £18,000. Our expenditure variance is £19,000 under spend. So these are with a total of £38,000 better than budgets that we projected. That's quite pleasing. There are some part of saving is around salaries accounts that you have with the expenditure. If you screen, you'll see that our salaries budget, our personnel budget is down on expenditure and that's attributable to product salaries budget. Salary increases for 2022, 23 haven't been determined yet. So there's obviously every month that goes by, there's a potential backlog that sits there. But overall, there's not very much to be concerned about. Venues and markets, I know they have their meeting tomorrow, so you've seen their reports. Their income has down and consequently they've had some issues around expenditure, but that should pan out over the rest of the year. The first quarter is quite tough from a financial perspective. And the other kind of functions of the council are on track. So there's not much to be concerned about.
Mike? Just a quick piece, just to clarify for me. Thank you. It's on the first page of the item and it's about four lines from the bottom, where it says, "The overspending inheritance event is due to a cost of £4,000 that relates to prior year, which requires reallocation." Now, my question is, who does the reallocating? Is it this committee or is it?
I know it's, I have to do it. I had a list last, at the last meeting, I think there were about eight items that I had to work through. I've got down to seven are done and this is the last one to do. So it was done and the next one had to.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Yeah, I've got a few, if I may. I made a little bit of a note and I've gone through it. Firstly, you mentioned there about the the increase in wages for staff. And obviously, the longer this goes on, we're building up a backlog. How much of that underspend in personnel relates to that backlog? So we're, in terms of expenditure, just short £23,000 variance. How much of that is purely to do with salary increases for staff? Because presumably, we're accruing this every month and it's getting bigger.
It's, at the moment, it's about £31,000. So we have overspent in other areas of personnel, what we would call the old personnel committee. For example, in some of our costs, in our software costs, we actually bought two years' licenses in advance. So they, we don't, during, during the end year period, we don't go and work out on a month-by-month basis how much is prepaid and how much is not. We put it all back into expenditure, dear, we will, we will take it up. But there are, there's about £7,000 of software licenses that are prepaid and they will have to work themselves out by the end of the year. So I know at the last meeting, the concern mentioned, I think by you chair, that the, you know, if we, if we've really blown our budget in the first two months, what's going to happen to the rest of the year? It's unlikely that those costs, those costs will actually start, there's no big license costs coming through going forward.
Okay, good. And the pay rise for staff, that has been confirmed or not? I don't know, it's tied to the national discussions and that sort of thing.
No, what's happened is the National Joint Council have put out a proposal. None of the unions, it goes, it has to go to three unions. Two of the unions have to agree it. At the moment, I think they're all on balloting. I know one of the unions has been balloting and staff members, I think the other two are doing that as well. But I don't think that those discussions have happened yet.
Okay, so our estimate is based on best guess or based on a proposal national? How, I'm curious as to how far wrong we might be.
We forecast seven and a half percent.
Okay. And this was more curious than anything. So we've had a member of staff leave, decided not to come back after maternity leave. That's on the agenda for tomorrow. If the pay rise is awarded at a future date and backdated, where do those individuals stand?
On that particular case, it's quite easy because they were on statutory maternity pay. So they, they were entitled to, I think, about nine weeks of full pay. So we'd do a calculation for that nine weeks, the rest of the time they were on statutory statutory pay. So that, that was fixed by government. It's not affected by the
Okay.
the salary increase.
I'm just curious because obviously this has been going on for a long while and people will leave an organisation. And I wondered if, you know, they potentially miss out on back pay as a result. Okay, sticking with personnel costs. The budget for personnel for this current financial year is £962,000. Last year it was £782,000, so that's an increase of £180,000. Some of that is down to wage increases, so that would be the £31,000 figure at the moment. What's the other increase there? What new roles have been created that weren't there in the past?
I think what happens is all the overhead costs, you used to sit to the old personnel department. So you had basically the cost of running the council, so all your utility costs were sitting there. So we forecast that, sadly, we did the budget, utility cost peaks in December, we did the budget in November. Rates, we hadn't had any feedback from the other councils, so we projected higher than about five, six, seven percent. We looked at our other costs and it was really just a whole, I have a working sheet that actually explains every single assumption that we've made to get to the 962891. And if you'd like, I could actually take the bigger costs and actually show how we did it. The problem is that it's, and this is a challenge we have as a council when we do things. We're going, this year in November, we're going to be doing things by, whilst next year things could have changed. The reassuring thing is, I think, is that some of the cost increases that we did forecast may not arise this year. So there is possibly a little bit of, of extra money that we didn't forecast. But we only in the first three months, what happens in the remaining nine months and what happens, you know, from food inflation and all the other inflation costs.
Yeah.
So I point to project.
So the difference there is largely down to the finance side of it rather than the personnel. So rates, gas, electric, that sort of thing. I think it'd be useful to get a bit of a breakdown because obviously that's a significant increase in the one heading. And it'd be useful for us to be aware of that because, you know, £180,000 increase, we need to be aware of, you know, how that's come about.
Just to come back, there was a key driver for the perceived increase that we actually had was cost sitting in this particular department because that's our overhead costs.
Yeah. Okay, so on business rates, that was one of the increases that we had. We think the total bill for rates for the organisation is about 50K? From memory?
It's, business rates is 5124 on the expenditure side.
£58,846. I mean, obviously, all of our properties have different rate variables. I think it'd be really useful if we could have a list for the committee outlining how much for each property so that we can see, you know, what constitutes that £60,000 figure. It's quite a significant amount of money.
We have had some rebates back this year for the empty properties on things like shambles. We, we've got, I think, two years' base credits that got processed, I think in July.
Brilliant, okay, good. And it mentions there about the credit for shambles one received. And in the income, we've assumed no income for two units at the shambles. How are we marketing that? What's still available and how are we marketing that space? Because obviously, we want to make sure that we get that income in.
We use an agent to market it. There, there has been a little bit of interest. The challenges have been, one is that I think the last person to acquire for shambles one would compete with Shambles Street. So we asked the agent just to do those confirmations. And the other one was more of a holistic type kind of body treatment. And there were two people that were going to come in, they wanted to actually sub, one wanted to sub into the other one. And at the end of the day, one of the partners walked away. So it has been marketed, but I'm not too sure. You know, we just get asked, we send emails on a, not regular basis, but on a basis that will just say, something such as, "Agent has requested a, you know, whether they could do that." And the first thing we do is say, "Well, please, could, you know, if it's complex with the other, the other tenants, please talk to them first." And secondly, pursue it, you know, we're not sitting in our offices and saying, "Well, do and don't do that."
Okay, Terry?
Would it be worth, in that case, because I've been sitting empties for some time, would there be any value in taking it in-house, not directly?
I think we have a skill. We, we basically have a skill, a kind of capacity to construct, I think is the easiest way to describe it.
Yeah. There you go.
I'm responsible for content. I'm not a property agent at all.
Thank you. Mag?
Yeah, I get, I get your point, Terry, because there's nothing worse than having a property sitting empty. I do worry about us ever doing that because as soon as any of us are involved in direct marketing, you know, we are liable to be accused of underhand dealing, sideways dealing, whatever. It doesn't matter. I do think though, there's some, there's some good value in that because what we could do is actually use our media and advertise it on our social media and, and it'd be surprised how far that would reach. So
That was what I was thinking.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we've, we've got to keep a professional arm of, of business on that side of things. But surely, we could lend an elbow to it.
I agree. I mean, that's kind of the point of the question. We are putting a lot of effort, I think, as a council to improve that space in the whole area. But we have empty units, which we are being, not only are we not having the rent, but we're also paying out business rates for empty properties. And I personally don't think we're proactively marketing them as well as we could do. So I think we either need to get a new agent or an additional agent or do as Terry suggested and help with a bit of marketing ourselves. I would like to get them occupied sooner rather than later.
Yeah, for sure.
Can I just comment? The, the last time I checked the listing, the agent had, had as a selling point parking on the marketplace. So that was only a few months ago. So it might need a little nudge that there needs updating.
You can park there, you're just not supposed to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for me on that one. I noticed, I might raise this tomorrow as well, but I noticed waste disposal cost, there's a significant variance. Find the right number?
5126.
51. Waste disposal cost, 5136. This cost is impacted by inflation, monthly billing is higher and overloading fines incurred. How much are the fines? And is that our fault or is that because people, other people are misusing them?
I think it's quite difficult. It's just the cost per use. You will get an invoice on, this is now becoming a monthly basis, of between £20 to £30 as an overloading fine. I think the major concern we have is that the cost is just escalating. We're out of contract. We have at the STMT level to actually get back into contract. We're not using our recycling wastes sufficiently. So we're on, we just want to put together, we actually had asked one of the, our utility supplier or broker to actually do some research for us to see what, how we could actually go about and get additional income from our, from our waste disposal. But unfortunately, that's just too far in the rings. So we have to keep following that up. But we, I had to report back to the town clerk the other day as to where we are in terms of waste disposal.
Okay, so you can see my nervousness because the actual for June was £5,000. The full year budget is just short of 12 and we're at the end of June.
So that's easing away a little bit of our savings on the, on the salaries account that's been loaded by our waste disposal costs.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, Mike.
If I understand that right, is it, is it the case then, because we're not recycling enough? We just incurring costs because it's all going in the general waste?
I think, for example, if you look at the other councils around here, they get credits from the glass recycling. We don't get any because we're not separating out our glass. We could get money from our cardboard recycling. So that's, I think your point is correct. It's just that we're not splitting it up enough and then seeing, using the opportunities that we might get to generate more income from it.
Yeah, so I had a similar thing at Hollington. We, they actually stopped emptying the bins because of so far. And I think this is again, in your part here, Terry, you know, if we don't tell people that they are costing themselves money by not recycling, you know, they'll never get the point. So again, it's, it's a bit of an advertising campaign along with, we should be providing facilities to do the glass and cardboard and all the rest of it.
Absolutely. But presumably, that waste disposal, that's market traders?
We do provide a little bit of
An additional fee, yeah.
for market traders. I'm not sure that we recover money from them.
Okay, I know, it's a conversation.
We just limit how much, how much waste we do. And I think it's something that's, that the venues and markets committee may have to look at because
I know it's been debated a number of times. Guildhall, Carnegie, you know, when there's a party or a function, all the waste goes into those bins.
Correct.
Guildhall tea rooms, presumably.
Correct.
You know, there'll be a lot of food waste. Anything else? I mean, office, you know, office wastage and I assume you have a separate arrangements for shredding and that sort of
We do have a shredding arrangement and we have, we do keep our bins locked up because we've had instances where other neighbouring businesses have kind of used the opportunity to get rid of their, their, their wastes. So therefore, we make sure they've organised their own waste facilities.
Okay, so from a financial point of view, that's quite a priority. Also from an environmental point of view, by the sounds of it. I can't imagine the amount of glass bottles and stuff from, you think of the bar, I mean, that generates, in the Carnegie, that generates a lot of glass, I should think. So we want to make sure that for environmental reasons, that's been recycled. Okay, well, it sounds like you're on it and we'll have an update about that soon, which will be encouraging. And the only, I think you answered earlier where it's the equipment maintenance and support and the prepayment. When you say prepayment for licenses and stuff, what does that specifically relate to?
For example, our firewall licenses, some of our Microsoft licenses, our supplier came to us and said, "Look, these are the price increases." They can, we can pay for three years in advance, purchase the licenses three years in advance and that's really what we've touched. So unfortunately, we don't have a sophistication in the capacity within the finance function to, to actually do, you know, accrual, monthly accruals, we can only do it at
There's an incentive to pay three years in advance.
It's a huge saving. I mean, they gave us, they gave us a figure. So it's six, I think of that cost, it's six to seven thousand pounds just of prepayments for this year. So that's quite a venture.
Yep, that makes perfect sense as long as we account for it properly and, you know, it's not really an overspend. We're sort of investing to save there, so I think that's I'll shut up now. Does anyone have any further points?
Yeah. Would it be possible, please, this is, I've done some work up here, obviously. Would it be possible, please, to have a further breakdown of wages around the group? And the reason I ask for this is because I spoke to David Brooks and I asked, asked him, "Does the team room make money?" And he showed me all the, all the takings and blah, blah, blah. I asked him, "So how does that compare with wages?" "Oh, yeah, well, the wages are all in one." So we can't actually tell what Carnegie makes, what the T shop makes, what these all, all these things make. Would it be possible to have a breakdown so we can make a fair comparison in that, in that manner, please?
For the previous chair of, of venues, whether it was venues, I did an exercise a while ago. I had the tablet set up and I quite happened to do that. Would you like to be the table of this committee meeting or? I wouldn't have the chance to have a
I'm a reason. Yeah, I think it probably would be best at this committee, actually, don't you?
Yes, and that would give you till September. Because Terry's committee only meets every other month, so that gives you a bit longer.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
Thank you. Cool. So we are required to note the financial report or happy to note. Lovely, thank you very much. Move on to 166, personnel report to receive and discuss the attached personnel report. Very encouraging to see both officers and councillors attending a number of training courses. Over and off. Yeah, there's a whole load of things on there, which is interesting. So trading is the first bit and then the second. Staff matters, I think we were all emailed about the personnel situation, member of staff not coming back after maternity leave. And then we've got the meat of the staff event on Friday this week, that's Friday this week. Do we know what sort of format that's going to take, Alan, and how many people have said that they're going to come along?
I'm not too sure. We've had responses from the councillors, but from the staff, everyone who's at work that day will be there. There might be an exemption.
Yeah, so it's literally just a cup of tea and a chat with staff.
It is, maybe we might. I haven't spoken at the time, spoken in detail, but I would imagine we either put name badges on people because it's not very unfair to just walk around and remember treaty names when you've been introduced to people. And just, and maybe just put them to customers as well so that, you know, councillors on specific committees could maybe meet the staff that they, that live in those particular functions.
Yeah. Can we send a reminder out to councillors about that this week, just to make sure? I think it'd be a really good opportunity for them. It's unfortunate it's during the day because I know there's a lot of staff that, a lot of councillors at work. But hopefully, there was sufficient notice that people can make arrangements, but, you know, it's a good Sorry? Who's it here?
I've replied.
You've replied. What a relief. I bet they're over the moon, you're coming. The one person they probably all know.
On the downside, I've also replied.
Oh, okay. I have a reply, that's how organised I am. But no, I think it's a really good first step. So I'm pleased that that's been organised and we can review it afterwards to see what else we might need to do, but hopefully that'll be very beneficial for everybody. Anything to note there under council news, Alan? Changes to EU employment law, working time regulations?
Let's just object the committee on some objects that's not seen. Be interesting for them, just not in the chief.
Yeah.
Councillors to
Yeah. Okay. The agenda says the lead for that personnel report is the chair and the finance officer. However, I would have expected it to be the town clerk. He's not here.
I think if, if there was a matter of, if there was a significant personnel matter, there would be an attendance. But I think it's, it was just, it's routine matters. So, so I mean, just to verify, I think for the committee's sake, if there was a serious personnel issue, the first person that the town clerk would notify would be your chair of this particular committee. There would be a discussion as to how to deal with that and it would be brought to this committee either above the line or below the line. If it was a detailed staff issue like we've had last year, it could be below the line. But it really is a matter of, at the moment, and I have to touch wood, there's, there is no contentious staffing issue that we have, that we have.
Okay.
The town clerk would be in attendance and would certainly have consultations with you.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to take the views of the committee, but it's certainly my view as chair. When we merged finance and personnel, the expectation from me that the town clerk and the deputy town clerk and lead for finance would both attend the finance and personnel meeting. This is our third meeting now, May, June and July, where we've just had the deputy clerk. Useful and brilliant as you are. I do think, and I don't mean to pick up finance and personnel, but it's pretty important stuff. I do think the town clerk should be in attendance. And if the committee tell me we're not really bothered and we're happy with Alan, then we'll go with that. But it's certainly my view that I think we should have the town clerk at our monthly meetings.
I agree. I, I think years ago, we had one committee that tended to be slightly more, how can I put it? influential than others and generally, general purpose at one time. And the town clerk would have attended it. I think it might be useful to possibly invite the town clerk to come or make it clear in some way that it would be helpful to us or to her or both. I'd like to think that this is the committee of all the committees, which were the most important decisions to be issued. I mean, we cannot do without money and we cannot do without people. What else, what can be more important than that? So I'll back you entirely.
Okay, Terry?
Yeah, I'd go for that, right? I'd also add, I've seen the town clerk at every planning meeting and taken Mike's point on. And I think personnel and finance is more important than planning, I really do.
Yeah. Okay, noted. Anything else under the personnel report? 167, the use of decisions software for emailing agendas and supporting papers. So this is a software package to consider. Well, we kind of use it at the moment, but not quite. So it's whether or not we want to make it more fundamental to what we do moving forward to limit the number of emails. Have you got a little bit of a overview of how it physically works? I'm quite keen to better understand.
There's two sides to it. One is the, is the input side, which the officers produce. Karen spent her life uploading documents into it. And so from, from a, an officer's perspective, once, once we are using a copy, and there's also a learning curve for us, that's everything else. It's a key workflow process. So at a meeting, responsibilities can be assigned to, to staff members. So immediately we will get reminders, this is going to be done, that's going to be done. So we're trying to use it for that, for that purpose as it stands. It generates minutes. So that's, it's, you know, very, Karen could be typing and have a template of minutes and then we just need to refine it. So from the, from the user's perspective, it has a significant amount of advantages. Sorry, from an officer's perspective, from a council's perspective, I think there are two key advantages. The first one is that you, you will not get information emails to you sporadically. And, and, you know, to be, from an officer's perspective, sorry, picking up my finger. It would be ideal if we could say, get all the documents together, get the agenda together and send it all to you in one email and then you would know where to find it. Uh, uh, it would be ideal if we could say, get all the documents together, get the agenda together and send it all to you in one email and then you would know where to find it. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen. You know, we've got amenities in two weeks' time. Uh, um, the financial report will not be done when the agenda goes up. So the, the reports will come out and, and, and the advantage of, the key advantage of decisions will be that as councillors, you can go onto the agenda and you don't have to find all the emails. They'll all be in one central place. So it's a central repository of all the reports. If we update a report because there's an error in it or more information comes about, we don't have to keep sending you, uh, uh, reports. And all you'll get, unfortunately, you will get an email to know that the, that decisions have been updated. But it's, it's an email that you can, you can easily forget. And the second part of it is that you could actually use it to actually make your notes. So every councillor can go on and say, okay, uh, that's very interesting. I, you know, I'm reading this particular attachment or supporting working paper. Uh, you know, I might question this. And you make the notes and they are specific to you. No one can access it. We've got a freedom of information request, for example. We don't have access to, to, to that. So you could write, you know, your own notes. And the, the third advantage to you is that you could have all the information, you know, at your fingertips. So if, as we go to this meeting, if you wanted to follow up on, 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 on the point that another councillor had made, you would actually be able to easily access the information. And it is relatively easy to use. Why we brought it together is that we're using a hybrid system at the moment and hybrid systems really, you know, cost Karen a huge amount of time because she has to put everything on on to decisions to help us, our internal workflow, and then also, uh, sort of email it to, to, to the councillors. So if we could eliminate that process, it would be very, very useful. Like everything else, we can pilot it. If it doesn't work, you know, if the councillors find it very, uh, uh, you know, chunky or I'm trying to think of a word, uh, use it unfriendly, we can, we can walk away from it. So it might be worthwhile to say, well, let's use it for three months, have some training, use it. If it works, we're happy or we review the decision and look at other, um, um.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Um. If you look at the top of my head, you'll see it's very white. Probably an indication I'm the least technical person in the room, likely to remain so. So from a personal point of view, I reckon I may well struggle. I could actually be, uh, useful in that sense. Uh, you, you talked about introducing it on trial and having training. Can I put it the other way around and say we need to have training? And then when everyone's passed the training or shown that they're competent and can cope, then we give it a three month trial. But it's got to be that way around. We've got to have not just all the staff able to cope, but all the councillors, eighteen of us able to cope. Otherwise, I think you're stuck with a, I understand fully how it isn't a pest. I can understand fully that from the point of officers, this is time-saving. I don't think as a councillor personally will save me a lot of time, even if I ever get the competence. But I'll give it a go, providing the training is there first and we all get to a stage where we say, yes, I'm confident I can manage this. And incidentally, on passant, if I can manage it on this horrible little bit of kit, I'll personally eat it or something.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Mac, please.
Uh, yeah, just to echo exactly what you said there. I've been in, um, two very large organisations which have done a similar thing. And both of them have failed in the training part before implementation. And what they found out is, uh, you know, both of them are still running two systems because they simply cannot break the chain.
Yeah.
In their, in their old way of working. So you've got some people who are, uh, fully into all the tech and are getting it and others are constantly asking where stuff is. So if we don't do that, we're going to fail. What I would say in addition to that, I don't think there's really an option. We, we cannot stay doing this old money. Uh, we, we've got to move forwards. Um, and, and that's just the fact that we, we're going to have to get on board and do the training.
Okay, thank you. Terry?
Yeah, I'm bored with that. Um. At, at the moment, if I want to, I've got several choices to, well, when I'm sitting at a meeting now. I, I can sit here with my phone and my, um, tablet and switch from one to the other, looking at papers and agenda, or I can print everything out, everything out. Now, in Terry's case, you printed everything out because that's how you've got to do it as a chair.
As Karen treats me, which is too good to me.
Well, that's lovely. I don't think with the best will in the world, we want to be printing stuff when there are other ways of doing it too. And so my, you know, if we can, if we have, if we can find a way, get a one-stop shop for all this information, that would be absolutely lovely, I think.
Yeah.
And, and I think it would probably cut down on, um, on mistakes and errors as well.
Yep. Uh, when I was, uh, looking at this agenda item in advance with Alan, uh, I did remark that when I first joined the council, every single agenda and report and minute paper was posted to councillors.
Of course, they waste, um, what's a waste money?
We, we spent four grand a year on postage alone. And that was in, you know, when second class stamp was twenty p. Anyway, uh, we've made some progress since then. Uh, in terms of moving forward, um, is there an official, uh, decisions training package? Is it something that either somebody can deliver or an online training course? Who, who's going to run the training? Because I think, I think it was Mike's point about we absolutely must have the training before this is implemented is key because we did try and there was a move to implement decisions a while ago and we started using it and everyone said, well, what's this? I would be keen that we do the training first.
I think, um, we, we have a training provider that, that, that's a support for this. So I'm sure that they, they work all over the world. So I'm sure we could find a time zone that, that we could fit into, uh, uh, so it's not necessarily after hours. I, and I, and hopefully they've prepared it. I just, my personal observation is when they first started, it was all about the office's side of the input. And I don't think that's of interest to the councillors. It's how do you actually use it? You know, that, that, that's the benefit of it. So we'll do some, some research and just make sure that there's data. But it should be, we should be able to organise a number of sessions because people that provide the support are international. So we can say, look, we want support from six o'clock to seven o'clock maybe before a planning meeting or something like that. And then we could actually, um, um, organise it then. But I'll certainly make sure it's never stopped.
Okay. Chris?
We did have a session with some chap from Norway, some time ago, talking to us about this. He was, spent an hour going through it and he picked on Brenda, because the candidate at the time, to work stuff and it just didn't go. Nothing. We don't, yeah, I mean, it worked us, the equipment we had didn't work. Uh, we were so lucky. We had to put in a two-factor authentication thing or to make something in the U. And so I would log into decisions and suddenly I could put my phone on, try to get the code up for it. You know, which I don't know if that's still the case, but.
I mean, I, I would, I would just say, to be fair, I, I do that with every other group I'm in.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I'm always going, oh, and I've got to prove it's me and put my number in. So that, that is just one of those things nowadays.
That's the way of the world.
Yeah.
It is, but this chap from Norway said.
Okay.
Tried to do it, but most of it just went.
Um, well, I think the, the suggestion of doing it as a, uh, trial is a good one. So if we put a deadline to complete the training at the end of August, because it is something that we complete individually or as a group, hopefully there's sufficient time in August, uh, to do that. We'll review to starting it from September and then we'll run the trial throughout the autumn, um, and review December. I think December would be a good month to review it. Uh, and if it works, we'll stick with it for the rest of the year, uh, as in calendar year, merril year. Um, but if not, we'll have to have a think about what else we do. But, uh, hopefully it will work. Um, and we can address any issues, but the key is the training before the end of August.
There was one stack, if I'm ever right, the different system on iPad and the tablet the other councillors had.
Hmm.
It was different. So my stuff on iPad is completely different what you have the chances of getting on there in an OVO type.
I think this, I think there's an easy answer there. It should just be being on iPads, isn't it?
Not for an iPad OS, will it?
I'm sorry. Um, Windows works perfectly well on iPads, doesn't it? You know, Microsoft, uh, Sweden's work on Windows, uh, on, um, iPads.
Your kit there, Mac, is that town council or your own?
Uh, I, I gave up on that a long time ago.
And Mike, is that town council?
Town council, I don't know.
So of, hold on, six people here, there's only one member using the town council issued equipment.
I, I think I would need to check to get, this will prompt me to give this up.
Yeah. And I, I think there is a wider issue about the council providing the tools to members to do their job. I, I gave up because I couldn't work it. I, I used my own. So I do think we need to look at.
This, this is, this is the best tablet I've ever had. This is council.
Rutland?
No.
Oh, you, you've got a town council?
Yeah, this is, this is.
Ah.
I've supplied this by.
Is, is that a new one or is that a, the old kit?
What previous ones have you had? Etch A Sketch or?
So I've got, I've got a great fine iPad, which is disgraceful. So it's, it's appalling. Yeah, it's all but unworkable. This is brilliant because it's Android.
Okay.
So everybody, everybody, the most intuitive platform in the world.
I miss call sign.
You use Android and I use iOS.
Yeah, that's, 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 and you're the people that have problems.
Ah, that's the right one. That's your etch a sketch.
It's always against him. That's the end of it.
I, I missed something. I think my only experience with decisions and teams was an invitation to join, which I did. And then I've, I was kind of left to my own devices trying to navigate what it was. And something like what you said, Alan, what, what your intention is with the, with the system, a little paragraph to say what we'd like to do with this is you can write your own notes and they are your notes. Nobody else has access to them. Something like that would, would be helpful to know. So not even a training session, just a description of what it is of I have, um, added myself to. Because I didn't really know what, I just said, yeah, okay, I'll accept the invitation without knowing what it was. I don't know if that's my, just my experience, but that's how I felt about what I, what I've got myself into.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, let's say the agenda item is to make a recommendation to full council. Um, so I hope, um, I'm always keen not to repeat the same debate. So if we could have your narrative, uh, to accompany the minutes. Uh, and then hopefully we won't have to go back through it again at full council. But I think, you know, there will be support for a system. Whether or not this is the system, we don't know until we try it. But, uh, yeah, I think that's a way forward. Um. The only other thing linked to this, uh, it says decisions, which makes me think that very often in committees, we have debates and we make decisions. What happens next in terms of how the council officers act on decisions arrived at by different committees? What's, what's the process internally?
We, we have had a challenge about doing that. So what I'd like to do is coordinate, uh, uh, all, all the action plans that come out of various committee members, uh, committees. I have a control book and we're taking them to the S M T that we start actually actioning them and time framing them. And that's really what we try to do because at the moment there is a lot of stuff that falls through the, I mean, I've had to apologize to you. I think outside of EDQ, I have forgotten to do something and you, you pumped it because we had done that. So that's really what we're working at. Uh, is to get that in place. So we have a control sheet and that's why decisions is quite important for us because we could actually then use it as a mechanized. So if, if I've given a task out of this committee, for example, uh, it will likely every single day until I do the task, I can't just delete the task. I actually have to do it, complete it, yes. And, and that's the, that, that, that will happen. But we're going to drive it at the S M T level. And that's what we, that's what I'm hoping to do.
Okay. I would hope with a streamlined committee process, um, there's capacity now and the, the dates are mapped for the whole year. There is a process by which point you can sit down after each meeting or at regular points throughout the month to say venues has happened tomorrow, what were the decisions and what now needs to happen? Because I'm quite conscious that sometimes we make decisions as councillors that I don't always feel get grasped and acted upon. But I don't know. That's just a personal view of that's wide a shed. But, um, I, I'm pleased you're working on what comes after the meetings because there are lots of things I think that we do, uh, slip through the net.
I would agree. I think it's one of those frustrating things you have to face that we'll make decisions, we'll make the decision at council. We'll tell the residents what we've done.
Hmm.
I mean, the cemetery gate to the private shop.
Yes.
They decided to do something, but, but nothing happened. You know, it's a year ago now. It's still nothing happened, you know. And, and I do find sometimes, uh, we run into this hungry complex.
I mean, that's you, Alan.
It's hungry complex. That president, he's going to tell you.
Yes, Minister. Yes, we've, it's Minister. He doesn't watch TV. There's another one for your list. Yes, Minister.
But I mean, it is frustrating when we, I think they're making decisions. Nothing's been happening, you know. And which now we, now on chair of allotments, I can change it on.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I've got Mac next.
In, in some ways, we, we, uh, we do business in a very old fashioned way by referring back to minutes from previous meetings. Most other organisations that, that do this will perhaps have a set of minutes, but at the bottom of that set of minutes will be a task tracker. And that task tracker for this committee, for instance, would be one page of the overall council task tracker. And then you can see cemetery gates. If it's the cemetery's committee, you go, and I was a cemetery gate thing, still no progress, but we've ticked that off and checked if it's happening. So at every meeting, at every point, you know, that's updated. And of course you can always go back in and check the task tracker to see actually if it has been done yet before you can go to your meeting. So I think that's something that perhaps wants to be added on to the bottom of standard minutes anyway.
Okay. Yes, we, we, I think we tend to use Planet as part of the, the link between decisions so that that also sits down and helps us in terms of our workflow. Because we definitely have a problem. I mean, one of the things challenges we have and, and, and is, I mean, we've got to get the minutes out quick enough. Uh, uh, and that is the south of the challenge. You know, Paul Karen's got, we had allotments in Thursday, it's got, uh, uh, filing status, but the news of Marcus tomorrow, that's a lot of minutes to get out. And we, we really focusing on the minutes to make sure that, that they're really active. We have recordings now. So if I'm the committee officer, we go through those recordings. I had to listen to amenities today before I could sign off the amenities minutes. So that is, it's how we streamline those processes and we've got to put our head down a little bit and think about it. But if we, if minutes come out so late, we, we, we're on the high end of nothing. And, and if stock goes and leave, you know, as happened in amenities, you know, a staff member went ill. It, there's two weeks, nothing happened. You know, it was very frustrating because they're ill, you know, they're, they're not work. So we have to just learn how to manage that. And that's, that's really what, 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 what our challenges have meant.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, Mike, did you want to comment?
I think it's been covered. We, we just need to find a better way forward. I think there's a difference between what we think we've done and what the officer thinks we've done sometimes. Can I just check up on the, the decisions? Did we say where there is this training? Do we, uh, is some access?
We will say that.
Okay, good. I think that's quite a useful discussion because I think it's something inevitably we'll have to have early on, particularly with a council with lots of, uh, new members, understanding the committee structure and the process by which we arrived at decisions and crucially how they are implemented. I think it's quite important, you know, none of us are here just to talk about stuff. We want to get things done, I hope. Um, so, uh, that's useful and I'm glad that S M T are aware of that and, uh, working on it. Um.
To interrupt, sorry, but the key issue in all communication is not what you say, it's what the other person hears. It's not the same thing very, very, very often.
Agreed. Um, okay. So we need to make a recommendation to full council on the adoption of decisions for a trial. Would somebody like to propose that, please? Mac? Has somebody liked a second? Ron? All agreed? Thank you very much. Item one, six, eight, proposed financial timetable. Uh, to agree the financial timetable for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four year so that the committee can exercise oversight over the finance function as well as the transparency code. Alan?
What happens is in terms of financial regulation, there's certain tasks that have to be done. And then the transparency code, there's certain tasks that have to be done. And what we, what we did, and we'll say we, the, the previous finance committee did is they wanted to, to exercise oversight over this. Uh, the third thing that we have is a budget timetable. And we had all these timetables and all these checklists floating around. And what I thought the opportunity would be would be to present a consolidated one to this particular committee. This was, this is part of my kind of job role is I put this on the notice board behind my desk and every morning I have a, a good look at it. And basically it just sets up the key tasks that have to be done. So for example, very shortly I'll be bringing, uh, uh, the the financial regulation state that the finance committee has to, uh, get a listing of all direct events. That has to be tabled. And then there'll be a link to what we put into the list agenda from a finance perspective and the tasks that have to be done. And it also just could give you assurance that we're doing the basic things like stock counts and asset inventories and updating the asset registers. Uh, uh, our financial risk, when we're going to do that, because that's a critical task that we have to do in terms of our governance statements and the annual reporting. So it's all just geared to. And the annual reporting. So it's all just geared towards that. The dates are already centered around the 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 meetings of this particular committee. And uh, uh, um, purpose that the transparency code. Uh, incorporated into uh, at the bottom part now, where it's separate, it was used to be a separate checklist. That's there. For example, today we published our first quarter expenditure. We've got other things that we have to do in the first quarter. They'll be done before the end of the month. Um, and then we have a budget timetable. Uh, the month set out, uh, uh, what needs to happen so that we can have a budget approved by the end of the year. So this is just again. Our financial regulation say that this committee needs to approve a budget timetable and this is what we've been tabling for this. So it's just a. You know, every every three months I should just table status of where we are, that this committee gets the assurance that the key financial tasks are being able to.
Okay. But a long list.
It is.
Any questions or comments?
You can go, Kate.
We always do, but we have to. We 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 build our processes around that. But it's very useful. This is exceptionally useful. For us as offices because, you know, I could then better utilize, I have an assistant. My assistants can be could be better utilized because they have an understanding of what we need to do, when we need to do it by.
Okay, so if you've got six, there's no great.
Uh. Yes, I I don't need to do not do something if I'm dead and hospital is on the jail.
I think some of the things they just said is we think that we have to do.
We turn around it, that has to be done.
Okay, I'm looking at uh appendix A. Um, is the uh. Uh, dates along the top there, are they correct? Or is that uh April twenty four, twenty?
Uh, they are correct. I was going to move them around, but I thought it just messes up everything. So we start. Uh, from from July twenty three would be our starting point, because the new committee system comes into being.
Yeah.
And we finish also in May twenty four. And it's just a little bit easier. Sorry. It's just helps me psychologically. Uh, uh. A different way of doing it didn't work for me, so.
Okay. Um, and stock counts, including bar. Uh, is it realistic? We would do that on the thirty first of December or would second, third of?
The second, it'll be effective. We'll, if if there was a function on the first of January, we'd have to come in on the thirty first and do it. Otherwise, we defeat the object of doing.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, uh, one would hope New Year's Eve you'd have a good use of uh stock. Deplete your stock. Um, and holiday pay for seasonal staff. So seasonal staff that work for us. Um, accrue holiday pay throughout the year. And do they then just get one lump sum payment at the end of the year? Or do we pay them throughout the year, any holiday they've accrued?
We would pay if they wanted to go and leave, we would pay them. But what I have to do at the end of each financial year is actually close it off. Because otherwise, it's increasing in value and the same rules apply to to them as apply to other staff. You don't, you can't carry it forward. So we actually close it off. It just saves us having to find the new salary structure.
Yeah. And and do we insist that they take that leave or do we pay them anything that they're owed by the end of March?
It because they're seasonal, it's 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 neither nor, you know, uh, uh. Because it's, I believe they're not going to get paid. And it's just a matter of, I mean, we had one now that was away for two weeks. Uh, so they've started in October, so we paid them the the holiday pay and we care their liability.
Yeah.
They cannot carry it forward. So the same rules apply. So by the end of March, that's the close off.
Okay. Cool. Um, and presumably, um, every so often throughout the year. Uh, this list will be tabled and we'll check progress against it.
Very much so. Of course, the basis.
Of course, yes. Good.
Where is the last one?
Uh, the last one, we have a talking in system. So my assistant uh checks everyone's talking in. If you're not there, we go back to the to the register. Uh, to check if you're leave and if you've worked extra hours, yeah, on the on the talking in system. Our tool is limited to eight hours to carry forward. So it's very difficult to easy. We can, we just calculate the hours for us. So we know, for example, I use it to manage my own tool. Uh, we've got to have a parking system in this building because we know a time meeting's uh finished because they're they're in the minutes. So we, it is monitored. I take responsibility for monitoring the stock.
Okay, no one has lost out.
Well, we do because you can only carry forward eight hours, uh, but.
It's on a monthly basis.
On a monthly basis. So I, the emphasis is on me to take it. I took trial on Friday, for example, because I don't have all the evening meetings. Uh, that's what we do, you know. But at the end of the month, if it's not taken, I can carry forward eight hours. And there's going to be sort of by a time sheet and anyone's got to be sort of by time sheet. And if there's more than eight hours.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sure I don't want to answer this, ask this question because it's about to be a simple answer. What does A G A stand for?
Uh, the Annual Governance and Accountability Return.
Okay.
It's our strategy of, if you're really bored, you can go outside on the notice board if there's actually a copy of it on the notice board. Has to be displayed for.
I'm just pleased I shouldn't have known that.
You should read the minutes somewhere.
It's a bit like an annual return, basically, for. Local councils. Okay, so we are required to note the timetable. I think it's fairly comprehensive and it'll be useful as we go. Throughout the year to uh track our progress against it. So I think it's a really useful document. Uh, everyone happy to note? Yeah. Thank you very much for you and your assistant for pulling that together.
Uh, you've given us the tools to monitor your performance against them.
Uh, right, one six nine, uh. Establishment of an investment subcommittee to meet with the council stockbrokers and to review the portfolio performance. Uh, so we're being asked to consider the establishment of an investment subcommittee to meet with the council stockbrokers. Uh, and review the investment parameters of the council share portfolio. And I think it was at our first meeting that we talked about the council's investments and frankly, how crucial they are to. Providing income to help fund services. Uh, so I think really that's where we're at in terms of uh why a subcommittee would be useful. Um.
Just as an auditing exercise rather than.
Well.
Investment advice.
Yeah, do you want to? But I think some of these suggestions actually come from the stockbrokers themselves, isn't it?
I think really what happens is is the last time that this council set parameters for the stockbrokers. Was was before I joined and two, two or three weeks time, I've been here four years. So it is quite a while. The the stockbrokers have said to us that markets have changed. You know, we, for example, in terms of our parameters, we don't. Permit trading in emerging markets, it all has to be UK based. Uh, they've missed, they've looked at our investment policy and they've interpreted it as, you know, as quite a conservative policy, maybe that's. That's what they could. So what the rationale was is that the stockbrokers would actually like to have an engagement, like a workshop. With 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 the coun- with the councillors, but in a forum that you can actually do that. So you wouldn't want a structured, you know, uh, agenda. So it would be more of an advisory committee. The stockbrokers would be part of that advisory committee because in terms of our standing orders, they could. Would have an engagement, they would update you on the market, they'd update you on portfolio risk, they'd update you uh on trends. And then the committee could review, review its risk profile. A recommendation would then go through to finance committee and that would then be. As as appropriate. So it would have a report that would just go to finance committee. It would be an item on the finance committee agenda. I would imagine that we'd only, we'd only need to meet twice a year. Um, and it would just also, there's some statutory information that that they're supposed to have in terms of. You know, it's like opening a bank account, they could have, you know, your life history and everything else has happened. And that that process would also consist like that. But they 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 actually have asked for it. We had a meeting with them in February and they've actually asked if such a facility could be set up. They'll come along, do a presentation, have a discussion, uh, question, answer and give you advice. Um, and and then from there we could take it to the finance committee and any decision that was taken finalized.
Yeah.
And this paper is really just the rationale for that.
Would that incur a charge for their attendance?
And we pay a set fee. I think they would find it quite leaving because uh, um. It just means that they're not operating in a vacuum. Although they are. So they do have, Barrett and Cook who we use at the moment do have clients at that. So they, so they would just combine with one of those.
I I sense, Alan, they're wanting to more actively manage our portfolio or is that a?
I think so. I I think what they've done is 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 that they, I think they say we're missing out on opportunities. And and, you know, I mean, investing in deep, you know, sorry, a couple of days, but investing in in in. Dirty fuels, uh, uh, is something and investing in tobacco, for example, would be some of the parameters that this committee has set. And those are, you know, that's that's fair enough. But I think there's other opportunities that that we have missed that because the market's changed so much. You know, financial instruments develop quite rapidly. We're still stuck in a kind of like two thousand and eighteen, nineteen. Uh, uh, thinking cap. And I think they would get a lot of reassurance by assessing it. Uh, uh, you know, what our risk appetite is. Because that's all they're asking the whole time. What is our risk appetite? And if it's really low, they'll they'll manage the portfolio. You know, guilt has changed significantly, you know, uh, uh, since since we met in in. February. And yet they've been, they've started to move towards guilt. So we would possibly say to them, that would be, you know, the current market scenario that may not be appropriate. So.
Essentially, we've moved from an economy where there was no inflation to one where there's considerable inflation. And that that is different, isn't it?
Okay, so how do you feel folks about, first of all, the principle of setting up a a subcommittee uh on investments? Yep.
I ask whether, I just wonder if that's something that can be done within this committee. Rather than trying to take it out and make it another committee underneath, which has then got a report back, you know. Is that not a bit complicated or or could it not be tacked on to the front list? So we meet for longer, but. I don't know.
I I wonder if it could be tacked on to a full council, where everybody's here, all different.
If I could comment, the only reason why you want to 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 have it as a. You you have to have an add-on. It's that Barry the cook, you want them to sit at the table and actually have a discussion. And the only way you can get them to sit at the table is by having a an advisory committee. So it can be this committee plus Barrett and Cook. And you might remember Tom Clark as responsible finance officer, for example, who was a student and that's. So 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 it could be before or after one of these meetings, for example. Uh, but it would just be that you could have it and the decisions could, unfortunately, the decisions can't go to to the finance committee because it's not an agenda. You know, unless you anticipate what the agenda might be. If you had it, you know. A couple of weeks beforehand, you know, before another meeting, before a planning meeting, for example, and get the finance committee together, it could work. So I think there are a number of options, but it really is to get Barrett to cook to sit at the table and have a discussion with you rather than. You know, be subject to.
I guess any meeting would be required to be during business hours. That's that's the issue, is it?
No, 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 they came last night.
Uh, I think the answer to whether it's the subcommittee or not depends on how many people want to join it. Because I wouldn't want to not let anybody join it. So if you all said, actually, I'd like to be part of that, then you might as well do it as part of the finance committee. If two or three of you said, actually, I don't want to be involved. So who would like to join an investment subcommittee? So we'll do it uh as a finance committee, but separate to our main meeting.
Uh, I would think someone like, for instance, Hines would be very keen.
Yeah. I think we would, you know, open, open it to others and people can choose to come along. Yeah, absolutely. Um, okay, so, um, we are scheduled as a finance committee meeting uh to meet at six. Um, would meeting earlier cause difficulty to people that work?
Five would be my earliest on a standard working day.
Okay.
Same.
Same, yeah. I'm just saying, I don't really want to alter the published time for finance to meet. Uh, for the rest of the year. But if we looked at September. Uh, meeting at uh five to do the investment stuff for an hour, followed by the usual committee at six. Um, and if we can make sure, uh, things like the current investment policy is uh circulated. Um, and Barrett and Cook usually produce a very nice glossy report about how our investments are performing. So if we have that in good time as well, uh, because it'll be the first time virtually everybody has looked at it, so. Um, and if we record in the minutes, Karen, that um. That will be open for any member of the council to attend. Um, then people have had plenty of notice that that's the plan.
And are we able to say to those people who are not present now, and we expect this to be circular argument twice a year or?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, okay, uh, it depends if Barrett and Cook are free on the third Tuesday of September, but hopefully they will be, but. Uh, so just, uh, so we square that decision off from a minutes point of view. To decide whether or not to establish an investment subcommittee and how it will interact with the finance committee. Uh, I think we've done that, but to record it accurately, would somebody like to propose that? Chris and the second down. Thank you. Lovely, thank you. And I think that's a resolved rather than a recommendation because uh it's our committee.
Citizens, very well described, yeah.
Good. Uh, I think that's really encouraging and I, he's not here, but I think David will probably be uh keen to be involved in that as well, so. I think that's useful. Need to make sure he doesn't spend all our money. Uh, one seven zero twenty three correspondence to note and consider any other correspondence. Have we had any other correspondence?
I know we haven't, but one of the issues is that we're going to have to look at our activity passing, our contracts. Um, I'm trying to get the two brokers that we, we use one broker, we have another broker that was recommended by. Help. Uh, to get the information to us so that we can make a, make a decision. One of them has said information. And with your uh permission, Chair, if I can circulate that to the members, because next meeting we. Uh, we're going to have to make a decision. Prices are hot, the the, you know, the spot prices. They don't last for a couple of, you know, like getting a week or so to to choose them. But if I send up, we've got so far, a little bit of a a note. At least when we do meet, make that decision, we can actually understand that, you know, the past that cover will be the past that we could. Uh, we have, we have twenty four hours to to agree that otherwise we have to wait for these spot prices.
Yeah. Was that uh committee officers update, Ron?
Probably I for seven.
Do you have any other updates? Uh, action points. To review the action points carried forward from the previous meeting. Thank you for collating those, Karen, and we've got a couple we can take off. So uh. Dates that periodic staff contracts expire uh to be given to the committee. I know I've had them. I'm not sure the whole.
No, no, I get.
Committee have. Um, can you remember what they are?
Um. Members, sorry, uh, one of them is uh, contract expires on the first of October, the first. The first of October, I'll tell this, and the other one has expired, but they've been partly working for the council. So they've just moved, they've been too big to cross the new places.
Yeah. And is it the intention from a budget point of view that when the funded role finishes in October, that that finishes completely?
I haven't had a discussion. It's uh, part of it is is included in the budget, but um. Um, no decision has been made. I'm not too sure what the intention is.
Okay, so at some point we need uh an agenda item to review that and whether the council.
Yeah.
Wants to continue with that role. Uh, so we can mark that action off for now. Uh, website is kind of on the agenda for venues and markets. Tomorrow. Uh, so that'll be discussed there. Risk management in relation to Charles Burrell. Proposed date for that is end of August, so uh let's do a live action. And then the finance officer to send a copy of the lease relating to C B C to Council of Blackpool, which has been done. The actions that came from tonight, which I think probably were of being added, uh, waste disposal. That's quite concerning. Uh, so we have an action to review that. Presumably officers just make the decision and enter into a new contract.
I think it's. Value of the contract is 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 more than, we probably have to enter into a two-year contract.
Yeah.
So I think they would push us over the threshold because I can't see us getting uh waste disposal for less than ten thousand pounds.
Okay.
So it may have to be a more competitive process.
Yeah. Uh, okay, but if we have an action to receive an update on that at our August meeting. Uh, so we get that resolved. And then separately to circulate a list of uh business rates breakdown to committee members. Were there any other actions from today that people wanted to to record? Oh, uh, yes, staff, um. Uh, role salary information, yeah, to be so. Uh, role salary information, yeah, to be circulated. Anything else in arms? Nope. Uh, one, seven, three, two, three, community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Uh, will you separately pick up Terry's point about marketing of empty units? Because uh, if they are sat empty and they have been for at least a year. Current system isn't working, so we need to try something different.
Would say that there's a lot of premises in town that have been emptied for a lot longer than that.
Yeah.
Might not be just us.
No, that's very true.
Sign of the times, but can't do any harm.
No, and they are very small units, so quite highly desirable compared to some of the bigger units. You know, the fact that it's small business rate relief applies and that sort of thing is, should make them very lucrative.
Hmm, completely take your point, but I think we would be remiss to do nothing.
Oh, no, absolutely. No, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, with that, uh, thank you very much for your attendance. Meeting closed. Thank you.